Good evening, welcome to the Monday, March 27th Board of Selectment Meeting or Select Board Meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, approval of the agenda, we got any additions? Oh, you know what? I went to the school board meeting and I don't remember if I grabbed my, no, I forgot to bring it, son of a gun. The only thing that I under discussed, other business, I'd just like to talk a little bit about the Town of Rundle Board of Selectment Code of Conduct. Anybody got anything else? Motion, motion by Jason, seconded by Phil, any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Oh, you know what, sorry, I kind of jumped the gun a little bit, we've got a public hearing, we've got food truck applications, we'll take, there's three of them that are all part of one, so we'll do those three and then we'll jump to the others, so we've got Sprinkles Ice Cream, we've got Fried Seafood and Mr. T's Smoke Shack. Any information on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you, you received their packets, been reviewed, I believe they've paid their fees, every, everything that they were expecting to have into the town is, is in. The only outstanding issue that on the town's perspective is the installation of the crosswalk. The material has been ordered. I checked UPS tracking today, it should be in on Wednesday, this Wednesday, the 29th. I spoke to Roger and as soon as it's in, we'll get that installed. There'll be some changes in the crosswalk direction, obviously because of the engineered plan. And we'll have to bark out, mark out the rest of it, I also spoke to Mr. Myers on the phone. As you know, they've graciously have accepted the ability of purchasing that, that equipment. We'll have to maintain it and install it once it's in, but it'll be here shortly and then we'll get going on that, so.
Good, any comments from the applicants, if you got something, please step up, now we're ready to go, right? Okay, we'll move on to the next one, Thomas J. Calhoun, Son of a Bun.
I believe everything is, is in order. This one would be located across the street, neck within the, outside the required distance that he has to be from the intersection. It'd be in front of the antique spot, as I understand it. And I think everything is there that needs to be.
Okay, any comments from the public on that one? Okay, here are none, I will close the public hearing and we'll move on to regular agenda items. Now, the next thing on the agenda is a public forum, this is for public comment on any non-agenda items. If anybody has a comment that they'd like to make, please come forward, make sure the mic is on, state your name and the town that you're from, thank you.
Got it. Okay. Dan Fink, I'm from Talbot Woods in Arundel, I've been here for about seventeen years. Talbot Woods, we're fortunate, we're twenty-one units, we're twenty-one homes in a residential community, we have a homeowners association with covenants and restrictions. And we've, we're currently working on something with those having to do with short-term rentals. We have, in the past year, found that we have one unit that is being used as a short-term rental. We have, as far as we can tell, we have no provisions to either approve or disapprove the use of that unless it is somewhere defined as a business. Because in our covenants, we do not allow businesses within the residential community. In doing this research, we have found a lot of information on short-term rentals in Maine and in the general area. And I was just wondering if the town is looking at any restrictions or any legislation, I guess you'd say, for short-term rentals. We are attempting right now to take the temperature of the community there to determine whether or not we are opposed to short-term rentals or whether we're willing to accept them. We had, don't have an answer on that yet, it seems to be somewhat split. But from what we've, the research we've done, and we've done a lot, we see that they turn, they can be a problem in the area. They are basically self-regulating, which means they define their own usage rules and then they are responsible themselves for making sure that they're used. A number of the communities in the area, I've got Kenny Bunkport as early as twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one. Freeport, Cape Elizabeth, all of them have instituted some kinds of regulations dealing with short-term rentals. Last year, there were thirty-five hundred new short-term rentals in the state. They are burgeoning and we're a bit concerned about the uncontrolled manner in which they are going forward. So if there's anything, we'd like to know if there's anything that the selectmen, selectmen or that the town is looking at in way of regulating short-term or identifying even short-term rentals, at this point, they're not well identified. And if there is an interest there in going forward, we would like to offer our assistance as a resource to provide information and experience in this. Is, is there anything currently ongoing with short-term rental?
Not that I know of. Do you know of anything?
Not that, not that I know of, you know, that would be a, that would be a discussion that you certainly would like probably have with the planning board.
Right, and that we're interested in, is the planning board looking at anything from a zoning perspective? Because I don't know if there's anything within the zoning that says an area that's zoned as residential cannot have that type of business in it, I know that state court just decided on one in Portland, where they decided against the owner that they did not, oh, they were not allowed to have a short-term rental in an area that's zoned as residential. And we believe our area is, there's nothing but residents there. If not, then we will attempt to go forward with our modifications of our homeowners association covenants and restrictions to see if we can make that a feasible document for us to work with, but I for one do not want to become the short-term rental police, I don't feel like doing that, but I'd like to turn that over to a higher authority if we can.
Well, I mean, it certainly would be something you could at least bring up to the, our planner and planning board just to see if they're even looking at it, but I, I don't believe they are at this point. Tom, I'm just curious on the definition, you know, if, I mean, we don't have any definitions for that at all, but could that be considered a business?
I suppose you'd get arguments on both sides of that particular question, I've heard them both. But we don't have a definition in our ordinance, we don't describe it at all, that's what you, that's what you start, certainly.
There's a, there are several definitions, the tax definition is if it's less than fifteen days consecutive days rental, it's a short-term rental, but not taxable. If it's more than fifteen and less than twenty-eight, it's still a short-term, defined a short-term rental, but taxable. So that's the only thing I've seen so far that Maine has done is, as far as identifying the two between fifteen and twenty-eight days. I do know that Kenny Bunkport defines anything, it has to be less than thirty days, is a short-term rental.
Then the question then becomes, what, do you permit it or not, or do you permit it and regulate it, so those, there's a lot of questions to.
Right, it's whether you're permitted or not, or whether or not there is something within the zoning or should be within the zoning that says whether it's even applicable.
Right.
Thank you very much. Um, anybody have anything else on the public forum? Okay, moving on, approval of the minutes of March thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three. A motion by Jason to approve, seconded by Velma. Hey, any other discussion? All those in favor? Meeting in board reports, we have none, I did attend a school board meeting. Last school board meeting, I'll update it at the next meeting, I forgot my paperwork. Right, managers' report, first item under managers' report is the administrative inspection warrant of one fifty-nine, Dr. Roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I spoke to our attorney last week. We finalized the document to also include people that aren't employees, but have expertise in certain disciplines like structural engineering and electrical review. So he will be submitting that to the court and will let me know and will provide the necessary notices to the residents as well, that will be coming in and doing inspection of the property, so it's just a waiting for the court to give the final okay so we can move forward.
Okay, thank you. Next item is selling of tax-dated property for Three Deer Run Circle.
Yeah, as I provided in your packet, we do have a property that that we have some interest in on Three Deer Run Circle. I've again reached out to the trust to determine if they're interested in either working with us to to pay the, the back taxes and any penalties and interest and fees that we have, so they can regain ownership. I sent that both via certified as well as regular mail, the end of last week, have not heard back yet. We don't have many properties in this type of circumstances, as you know, we had one up off of Limerick Road that we were able to coordinate with the trust to pay that property back, so I'm hopeful that we'll have the same resolution here, but if not, I think we've given them reasonable time to at least contact us and let us know specifically their interest in the property. I did go by the other day and it appears to me that somebody is living in the property. It could be the trustee of the trust, I'm not sure. The last time I went, the, the snow had just gone and somebody had shoveled the driveway and it appeared that somebody was residing there, so we'll just take our steps and move forward and at some point, hopefully we can resolve this amicably.
Okay, thank you. Okay, York County Budget Committee status, do we have anybody?
Well, that was the reason I put it back on here, I, I'm not quite sure we have anybody. I was, I, my colleagues both from Kenny Bunk and Kenny Bunkport had reached out and Kenny Bunkport indicated they don't have anybody, Kenny Bunk's looking for somebody to perhaps be a member of the Budget Committee, the York County Budget Committee. So I don't know if we have anybody, we can talk about it again at our Budget Board Select Board Meeting. But just laying it out there, I mean, before, I think it's April, I think it's the first or second week in April that they meet, so time is of the essence at this point. We'll send, send people my way and we'll, we'll go from there.
All right. All right, so we have a consideration of beer and wine for an outside gathering by, by ACT?
Well, I had a, I had a inquiry by one of the ACT members that provided what they were looking for was perhaps consideration during their Trail Fest event, which occurs in September, whether the board would be interested in allowing a beer and wine sales from a vendor during that event. I said I'd approach the board and gain your your preference and non-preference in reference to that, and that's why it's there.
Any comments from the board? Do they, do they have kids, I mean, there's usually a bunch of kids that show up with that, right?
Right, it's a, it's an event that covers all types of age groups, yes.
Yeah, that's the one that's here, the, the trail run and when they end here.
Yes, they start here and end here.
I guess my first question would be insurance, like how would that work for us, just like a binder that gets added to, to our policy and?
Well, I would, I would assume there'd have to be some sort of binder there, I'm not, I'm not sure, I, I, I didn't really research it much more than just find out where we were in terms of whether the board had any preference about it. If the board's thoughts were that you wanted me to look into it a little bit more, then certainly I, I will. But I'm just trying to get you, gauge your thoughts on, relative to it. I, I believe so, I believe that they, there are, there are fees that are paid to participate in the Trail Fest, the run, I'm not quite sure about the walk. I do, I know they, they do encourage people to walk the trail as well.
But do we know what kind of licensing they need, or it would need, whatever?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
If, if you want me to answer those questions before you make a decision, I certainly, I certainly can get the answers on the insurance and licensing, what's required. But what I was just trying to do was gauge whether or not it was something that was completely out of your, your thought process or something that you would consider.
Yeah, I don't have a problem, as long as we have all of the, all of the information, the area where they're going to be serving it, who's going to be serving it, what their license and registration and insurance and all of that information that pertains to that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I would want it contained, right, I mean, you offer beer and wine, I don't want somebody to grab whatever and just start walking out onto the trail and you know, I guess we'd have to see exactly what their plan is.
Well, the events that I've seen of those nature, you're absolutely correct, it usually is located in one location. The ones that come to mind with me was being at the Freiburg Fair this past fall, where there were different beer tents and you had to consume that within that tent, it was an ID that had to be presented prior to getting any beverages at all, so that would be my assumption here, is that there'd be a location, a roped-off location of some sort that would then take place, those events then would take place there.
Okay, any other comments from the board?
No, I, I'd rather have the burden on them to come forward with a proposal rather than having you investigate on their behalf. That's my thought, I mean, if they, they want to give us some consideration, put something out there that we can all evaluate.
Okay, anything else? All right. Moving on to business. Action on food truck applications, looking for motions on the board to accept, deny, whatever. Yeah, it just doesn't matter at this point. Motion by Jason.
I'll second.
Seconded by Phil to approve Sprinkles Ice Cream, Hubert Meyer selling Fried Seafood, Dwayne Turnage for Mr. T's Smoke Shack, Smoke Shack and Thomas Calhoun, Son of a Bun. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I was just going to ask that.
Okay, for the Sprinkles Ice Cream, the Seafood and the Smoke Shack, for the ones across from Bentley's. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Welcome, again. It was awesome, I went there a bunch of times last year and it was awesome, so that's very good, thank you.
When are you opening?
Or maybe we'll have that crosswalk up by then.
Well. So, we should have that discussion, right, I mean, they want to open by Friday. You know, what's the board's position if that crosswalk is not in place, Bentley's is not open, I just want to make sure that we're okay, if not, you know, what's the board's position on that?
Do you find people park at Bentley's even when Bentley's isn't there?
No.
So why don't we make a contingent upon Bentley's opening and then if, if it's not operating, then you're going to have to shut down until it gets operation.
Right. So Jason, yeah, I mean, a motion's been, been approved, but you okay to mending your motion?
Yeah, no, I haven't.
Want to verbalize it or?
We got it. You got that? Okay. Very good, I'll be there Saturday. Thank you. Yeah, you, you folks are all set, thank you very much. We, we did. Okay, next item on the agenda is resignation of school board member.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, obviously, we received a resignation letter and have proceeded to begin the process of attempting to find somebody to fill that position. As you know, by charter, the, the select board is tasked thirty days to try to interview or select somebody and then appoint them to a position. That position would remain filled until the annual town meeting of this year, which would then require somebody to run for that open position. So, and that position goes to twenty-twenty-four. So we would also have Mr. Levek's position, which would be open, which would go to twenty-twenty-six, I believe, so if the rotation, the staggered rotation will, will continue. Since the sense of publicity on this position, I've had three folks that have already approached us to inquire about filling the position. I've sent them our application process. Once I receive those back, we'll begin perhaps interviewing here. You folks can interview some of these folks and decide who you would like to, to fill that position. Looking forward, if somebody really wants to become an active member, not just assist the town in a short period, but to be an active member of the school board moving forward, it's a great opportunity for somebody to get appointed, get their name out there, and then when the time comes to vote, obviously there, they'll have some, their name will be recognized by others and perhaps get the votes that are necessary to, to go, so the process has begun, I also advertised on the website that we're taking applications. And so I'll keep you in the loop as, as the process continues.
Okay, I do, I, I'm going to read something here that was put out by the school board, I just kind of want to make it you know, known and, and, and out there, I mean, not everybody has, I'm sure has seen this, so I'll just kind of read this, a statement from the school board. It says, Dear RSU twenty-one, twenty-one community members, we are aware of disturbing and offensive posts made online by a sitting school board director. The posts on Twitter were hateful towards transgender people, people of color and women. Individual board members do not speak for the board or the RSU twenty-one school district. We stand for inclusion and fostering a healthy learning environment for our students and a safe working environment for all our employees. We will not allow members of our community to be targeted by or subjected to bigotry. Over the past three school years, we have engaged in significant work around diversity, equity and inclusion, and we are proud that our efforts will continue to expand moving forward. In addition to creating a fifty-person ad hoc DEI committee, other initiatives have included providing professional development for staff and carefully assessing our curriculum and policies to align with state standards and Maine law. We also ensure that students who are in clubs and activities are engaged and active participants in these efforts. Our board policies make clear that we do not tolerate discrimination or harassment based on any legal protected characteristics such as age, race, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, religion, disability or any other protected status. We are fully committed to providing a welcoming, safe and supportive learning and work environment for all students and staff. We are proud of our firm stance on these issues and are committed to following our current course because it's the right one for students and staff. Bigotry and hatred have no place in our school community, sincerely, the RSU twenty-one School Board and Dr. Terry Cooper. So, I, I just, I wanted to put that out, it's it's my personal belief that I, you know, I support this a hundred percent and I'm hoping that applicants, as they come forward, also support it, so. Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, mine might be directed more towards Tom, but is there a way moving forward to better vet potential candidates and meaning, and this is a gray area, that's why I might have to turn right to get the answer here, but like social media presence of candidates, is there a way to to do a certain background check and, and not have a legal mishap, so to speak, if you go back into someone's, I mean, this, I'm not familiar with social media, I don't do social media, so, I mean, is there a way to, to understand a candidate's feelings prior to, I, I don't even know how to word this, prior to hiring this candidate?
I'm not sure you, you can.
And can you do it legally?
I don't know, I'm not sure you can, to prevent that, I think what happens is a public official. Oftentimes you extend yourself onto these social media platforms expressing whatever you think is your, your right to do, and as a public official, oftentimes that is totally inappropriate, I've, when I advise folks, our staff, I, I tell them, you know, if, if you have, if you do anything, do not post anything, just don't do it, I mean, you've now, you know, exposed your, your, yourself to all kinds of ridicule, whether it's right, wrong or different. Whether it's right, wrong or different, um and it's just unproductive for us all. Um. In the, in this case, um you know, I'm happy that the individual resigned without going through the um recall process. I can assure you that there were people within the community that were well-prepared to move forward with recall. Um and uh proceed that way, so um. I don't know how, Jason, I don't know how we answer, ask those questions other than, you know, uh you know, doing.
How far a group or a committee can. Can proceed with background checks? Like, I would assume uh someone running for school board gets a basic background check. They do a a like a police. Poll and see if there's any outstanding warrants or, I mean, is that, is that something that's done on a school board?
I don't know whether it's done, but you can do it. It's twenty-five bucks, I think.
Yeah, we we don't do it, but it, that's a good, that's a good point.
Yeah.
You could probably do a background check. I don't, I don't think that will show you what was expressed on the social media.
And that's why I asked the question about taking it one step further, but I don't even know that that can be done. I don't know how you would, I don't even know how you would begin to know. Like this individual in particular, like, is this something that could have been red flagged prior to him volunteering on this board? Like. Go back in someone's history and say, um what what are we doing here?
Well, I think that, I I think the issue we had here is that um um. Th- this is when public needs to get engaged in the process. I mean, he was the only one that ran for the position. And his name was the only one that was on the ballot. Um and if you recall, he was one of the folks that had come in to fill the open position when we had somebody re- uh resign and we. Filled it with another at the time. That was your um your thought process because we had somebody who had the experience on the school board at the time. So, but when you're running unopposed, uh and nobody knows you and then they start, you know, just filling, he got two hundred ninety-four votes. But nobody ran against him. So hopefully, uh if if it does anything, that we have some sort of engagement in the in the public process. If folks want to get involved in this and get their name out there and and get elected uh the good old fashioned way by sh- shaking hands and talking to people.
And to your point, Jason, there's there's no harm. You can ask somebody about an issue that you find important, that you want to know the answer to. Put it to them.
And maybe that's an approach that we take where. The town of Arundel, even if it comes from the residents, like, uh, look, you're gonna represent this town on whatever board. It doesn't necessarily have to be RSU twenty-one, but. Maybe there is a list of questions that's compiled by residents, uh past members, even current sitting board members. Where at least maybe the group can get a feel for. To avoid this nonsense. This is ridiculous. And this thing makes the whole town look bad, I think, like. We sending you out here to represent this town and this is what we we come up with, like.
So I I have reached out to um the RSU. I reached out to Dr. Cooper and I reached out to um. Uh Gail Spolford on the the um the policy committee. I'd like to see if they, I think that they have the statement that deals with DEI and I'd like to make that part of either a statement when we do the interviews or we can ask. I don't know if we can ask a question around it, but I'd like to make sure that when we do the interviews. If as a board, we agree that this is something we stand for, that. We make it clear when we do the interviews, you know, that, look, we we stand behind this policy. So I've asked them, I've looked at their policies. I haven't found anything that fits board members. Um I've seen it stuff for employees. So uh I've asked them for some information and we'll see what we get. And then when we decide to do the interviews, we can figure out. Uh we're gonna approach it. I think maybe that's the way, that's the way that we we do it. I don't know if there's any other way, but.
Could we create? A code of conduct and if we do. Can we enforce it?
Well, that's, I, we're gonna talk about the code of conduct after and and I think.
I mean, for the school board members.
So the school board, I looked at their code of conduct and they have nothing in their code of conduct on it. So now they are looking at that also. I don't know if it's enforceable, to what extent it's enforceable, but um it's something that the policy committee is looking at. Once I, when I saw this, the first thing I did is I went and looked at their policies, dug into their policies, and I couldn't find anything. That really kind of specific to this. So I reached out, said, you guys have something? And they were like, oh, we don't know. So they're looking into it to see if they can add something. You know, but I'm not sure how much meat that will hold. I I don't know. That's a discussion that I want to have a little bit later with with our. Lawyer at the end and so. Uh yeah, so have we got any other comments from the board or?
Mine is to the timeframe. We're going to be doing interviews to get someone to fill the job from now until June. But in, what is it, two weeks? They're going to be coming into the town office to take out papers to run. So while we're doing interviews to get someone to take the job. They're going to be coming into the town hall to get their papers to run for the position. So everything, uh I mean, they may end up having the job for two weeks or a month before they're before. They're elected. I mean, it's gonna be a very short timeframe.
Yeah, yeah, Jack, I got you. Hold on a second. I just want to get the board to deliberate first and then we'll get. Right? Yeah, I mean, we have. Thirty days, right? We can't, we can't sit there and say, well, let's wait till June, right? We. Charter says thirty days, right? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, we could, we could move fast on the three that you have presently, right? I mean, if either one of them are willing to step up to take this voluntary position until June, can't we start?
W- w- we can, and you can appoint anybody you so desire. So even if the process is ongoing and you have. Three or four candidates and then after you've selected somebody, four or five more come in. Um. It, that's fine. You've you've done your, you've done your diligence according to the charter and you hope that they run for the office when the time. Is appropriate for them to take out papers and whatnot. So um yeah, yeah, we could start. But right now I only have inquiries. I don't have applications in front of me. Once I have the applications, then I would. Uh approach the board and say, look, let's, let's get this process started.
Day clock start ticking. Is it the three twenty-two, twenty-three, the day he resigned?
Correct.
Right.
Okay, got anything else from the board?
I have actually officially accepted that resignation. Do we have to?
I think it would be a good idea.
Oh, yeah, good point. Okay, so a motion by uh Jason. Seconded by Velma to accept the uh resignation uh of Ryan McQueen from the RSU twenty-one School Board. Any other discussions? All those in favor?
Yeah.
All right. So uh we get uh members of public that want to make comment. I think, Jack, you do it. Step on up, please.
Thank you. Jack Reitz, River Drive. Uh. Couple of points. One, uh thing that you can do is is look at the. Uh oath that an individual takes. To become a school board member, uh that's issued by your town clerk and uh. Essentially, and in accepting that oath, you become. Not an employee, but a a member of a state organization. You're no longer a town representative. You're a state representative and you represent. Twenty-five hundred kids. Uh that's, that's your obligation. Uh secondly, uh. The the district and has uh. A list of about a dozen uh guidelines. That are used, expectations of board members. And uh I don't, I haven't seen it for a year or so, but it's. It's relevant and uh there's no reason that that couldn't be at least discussed with each member and interviewing them. To get their thoughts on. Not maybe not all twelve, but pick some that are relevant and and uh. I asked them what they think.
I've asked for some of that information from the school board, Jack. I've asked, um I've asked Gail, I've asked Dr. Cooper. Uh I've asked Aaron to, if you know, if they have any type of information like that that we could.
Well, if you don't, I do.
If you know, if you've seen it, let me know where it is.
Well, I'd have to dig for a while to find it where they can probably come up with it quicker, more quickly.
Yeah. Good, thank you.
And then furthermore, uh the state provides a a whole manual about that thick. Uh that are. Guidelines for school board members. Uh. But the the those twelve summary guidelines are really all you'd, I think, want for uh the interview process. Those are my comments. Have any questions? No?
Good info, Jack. Thank you. You have any other comments from the general public? Step one up and introduce yourself, please. The light's on, good.
Oh, now it is. Um hi all. My name is Brittany Gerth. I'm a resident of Arundel. Um I live off of Oakbridge Terrace, um just up the road. And um I'm here based on the vacancy of this seat. Um it is a position I had intended to run for. Um come the next election cycle. I was not a resident during the last election. Um however, I think this vacancy creates a really um interesting opportunity. That was mentioned um by a couple of members of the board to step in and volunteer to advocate for our community. I am a parent, um and that drives much of my passion for being involved in the education in the school system. Um I'm an active member of uh diversity, equity and inclusion for the company that I work for and that I represent. Um and I am happy to submit through an application process. Um I'm also happy to answer any additional questions that any of you may have at this time.
Well, I think we'll look forward to your application and uh, you know, we'll take it from there at that point. Certainly appreciate your your interest and we're always looking for interested people, so.
Absolutely.
I think that's awesome, so.
Thank you.
Brittany, what was your last name? Could you spell it?
Of course, it's Gerth, G E R T H.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. All right, moving forward. Provo of payable warrant. Motion by Velma, seconded by Jason. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Last item on the agenda is other business and I'll wait till that gets all the way through here.
I look at the one more thing I have to.
Too late. Heck, I hope we had stuff at the end anyways, you know that. Go ahead.
Just looking for an update on the fire chief.
He's back in his residency. I expect to see him sometime this week. Uh I'm uncertain as to when he'll be returning back to duty.
So he is home, Kate? He's.
As I understand it, yes.
Okay, um so the other item is um I asked the town manager to provide us with the um Board of Selection Code of Conduct. And this is really all based on what has happened with the RSU twenty-one board. Um. And I kind of going through here and if, you know, if all of a sudden I decided to go rogue and uh, you know, post all kinds of stuff on on. Voice, face Twitter or whatever you want to call all those all sites. I I do do social media, but um. I know that there's a recall process, obviously, but is there something that we should add? To our code of conduct and if we do, does it hold any weight? And I kind of want to direct that, I don't want to put you on the spot, Tom, but I kind of want to direct that towards what your thoughts are. If we should add something about. Somebody going rogue on social media or what have you, or I mean, we certainly can wordsmith it, but.
You can see, we adopted this back in two thousand seven, so some of the issues that are on the table this day was not.
Right, agreed.
Um uh so we should, sure, it'd probably be a good idea to maybe look at this and update it. Uh I don't think we could look at this as so- something that. Would give you the opportunity to immediately uh discharge an elected board member. You're gonna have to.
Go through the process.
Right, you're still gonna have to do that.
Yep, yep, but it does, to me, it doesn't, you know, hold weight. I I mean, it doesn't hurt to add to what's going on in today's world.
No, it gives, you know, there's some evidence there that would support protects the recall if somebody was violating um.
Right.
The code of conduct that we all accept in our. First meeting every year.
Yeah. So we probably should, you know, I I would say that we probably should work on getting something for the next board, so that they have for the next board. Now, um. That have to go to vote?
What's that?
If we change our code of conduct, that doesn't have to.
This is our policy, our code of conduct.
Yeah, that's your policy. The other thing it it that I always like to mention in these and I I generally don't have to do it with this board is that. Uh you pro- you folks have been pretty outspoken when you need to be. And I'm sure that if you had a um a board member who was, as you were saying, uh Dan, going rogue. I I think there'd be some discussions as to what was going on uh prior to. Um anything, you know, drastically happen. And oftentimes those frank discussions may. Um may either curb um what's being said or um sort of make uh an individual say, well, maybe it's time for me to resign and move on to something else. So um. Don't forget the chance that you have free speech as well and you can voice your opinions when they need to be voiced.
Yeah, but it's not always gonna be this board that's gonna be here, right? Okay, um anybody got anything else?
Jason, nothing, Andy?
Yeah, I guess he's got nothing better to do, right?
You're not asking for money? Oh, all right.
Not yet, oh.
Uh motion to adjourn.
The motion by Jason, it's seven forty-six to adjourn. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Velma. No discussion. All those in favor?